And thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. Just a little bit of background information for you. On May the nineteenth at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four vacancies that the city of Trinidad charter states. Within forty-five days when the vacancy was created, council shall choose by a majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. And that is why we are here tonight. Please note that if you are appointed, this will be an eighteen month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of 2021, you can put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a term of four years. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So please be as direct and brief so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council can make an informed decision. Our city attorney, Mr. Downs, will now explain the process.
Thank you, Mayor, and any of us. That you're for the council's information also from the public. But it is my understanding that correct is a no show.
That is my understanding as well.
Okay, just remember when I'm still there with this, any incident like we went out of course, and that's because Mr. Henderson was a no show.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, can you answer?
Ah, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas is the mayor of the town. We are going to ask you for three minutes to try to answer those. And then the mayor of the town will be asking you questions. You remain free to sit in the questions for the next seven minutes. After that, you'll tell them again the only question you have. And that they're they're looking for a good that they'll know any happens. They're going to break files and they're they're looking at you. Do you understand that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have any questions or possible more to begin?
Uh, no, sir. You can remove your mask if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. My turn? Okay, uh, go ahead and give us a three-minute introduction, please.
Uh, my name is Jared Thomas. I am a father of nine. I moved to Trinidad in 2017. A recent graduate of CSU Cuadros. I work right now at Walmart and at Big Daddy's as a cook on weekends. And I I am really, I was really affected by the recent tragedies our country is facing. And recently, I reached out to a few senators and a few congressmen with an idea to reform police, not not take the money away, but um, an idea I had was to have police for one shift, maybe build a rapport in the neighborhood by volunteering as counselors or mentors or coaches. And I thought it was a brilliant idea. And I'm here now to pursue politics.
Okay. Okay, that's your opening statement. I just asked the first question. Why do you want to be on city council?
I I want to be part of the change that's sweeping through our nation right now.
Uh, do you want to expand a little bit on that?
Well, like I said, I come from a long line of servicemen. I my great-great grandfather was a police in New Orleans. And the recent tragedies are really like affecting like me and my heart. Like I said, and I just want to be a part of the change that's coming. Bring about policy that will help both the police and the community.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, sir, what is the vision for the city of Trinidad? You hold for the next five years?
Well, I know that recently Governor Polis had passed the Fisher's Peak to open up. And I I really know that's going to bring a lot of potential to the city. Uh, hopefully some new businesses and new residents.
What do you, uh, Mr. Thomas, what do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
Gang activity? Drugs?
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that it's most of your sources.
You want to go ahead and repeat yourself?
Uh, gang activity and drugs. Illegal narcotics?
Les, go ahead and give the next question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Um, sir, can you tell us what is something that you think that your state council has done well over the last five years, please?
Well, I've been here for three, so the last five years. Can't really say-
For the last three years while you've been here?
I can't really say that I've paid much attention. I mean, I've been in, I've been in school and working full-time, so.
Something that the city council that has not done very well recently or of your timeframe that you've been here, or something that you disagree with, can you tell us if there's something that you feel strongly about?
No, I haven't seen anything that I dislike about the city.
Okay. Les?
Hey, thank you. Um, Mr. Thomas, how do you feel about legalized retail marijuana? Is there a legal word in Trinidad's?
Oh, I believe it was a right decision and I believe the economy like is doing well.
Uh, Mr. Thomas, is there one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
Um, yes, sir, I would like to, like I said, be a part of the change that's happening in America. Help with the drug activities, you know?
Mr. Downs?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I I just I just want to ensure that I don't get a little bit of confusion. So I want to touch the edge image in America. It's a bit more important to keep it general. Do you want to establish this sort of the most important question for expecting that?
Well, like I said, I would like to. I understand that police need reform, but defunding the police is not the right call. I think we need to add more funds to the police so we can better train them and have community relationships with them. Have better community relationships with them. If if we if we go after you-
Mr. Thomas, what do you think you would add to or how would you strengthen city council? Mr. Thomas?
Is he open?
Can you hear? Can you hear now, Les?
I can't. I can't hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor.
The question was, is-
I did hear you through the wall, right?
Can you hear me there now?
Yeah.
My question was, is what do you think or you would add to or how would you strengthen council?
Okay, um, I think I bring a unique perspective to the city council. Uh, I'm smart and talented. I'm hardworking, dedicated. And I'm dedicated to changing America.
Okay. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I knew, sorry, I must go ahead for a little bit. So I hope that this question wasn't answered better. But, um, there will be times, Thomas, where the party was one selected. In your opinion, your viewpoint in the town was ill. How would you handle this?
With open discussion. I mean, hopefully, the the disagreement can come to some kind of consensus.
I I couldn't hear, I'm sorry. Did everyone else hear his answer?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, go ahead. One more minute if you would like to ask one more question.
Okay, uh, not everyone has a copy of your application. Please, Thomas, have you been on any of the Trinidad boards or commissions?
No, sir.
Well, that concludes your interview. I want to thank you for your application and good luck.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
We're sanitizing tools. Um, we have a seat there.
Yeah.
It depends on the computer to go to me, so, um, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Ruble. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. And give you a little background information. On May the nineteenth at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned from city council creating a vacancy. You can remove your mask if you wish. Okay, five point one four vacancies that the city Trinidad charter states. Within forty-five days when the vacancy was created, council shall choose by a majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. That is what we are here doing tonight. Please note that if you are appointed, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of 2021, you can then put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a four-year term. Uh, due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So please be as direct and brief so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. Mr. Downs, city attorney will now explain to you the process. Go ahead, Les.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ruble, how are you, the city?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So, Ms. Ruble, it's the mayor of the city. Uh, you're you're going to be a lot of heads over masks. Please make three minutes of introductory three. Uh, twenty-three more years will be able to make a stable passage. Self, you know, so we'll be seven minutes worth of mayor. There's my question to you. There are now none of the applicants, right? And then after the theater can crawl. Then, uh, you'll begin voting and there will be one, so there's one. But you want to understand all that, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Ruble?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and start by giving you your three-minute opening, please.
Um, thank you so much for letting me present tonight. I was born and raised in Trinidad. I'm a fifth-generation native. I was educated as a physician assistant. I attended Trinidad State Junior College and the University of Colorado. I graduated with a degree in medical sciences as a physician assistant from St. Louis University. But the last several years, I've been a full-time long. I want to serve all the citizens of Trinidad if I am chosen, but especially the children and youth of Trinidad. I'm a long-term Parks and Recreation Board member. I have been, I was on that board for over twelve years. I think I was the longest-serving member. I love Trinidad. It has always been my home. I have always kept my voting privileges here since I registered at age eighteen. My husband Frank and I own a home in Trinidad for twenty-two years today. Our children were raised here and we have lived here for twenty-six years together. Trinidad and the community have been very good to me and my family. I hope to be chosen to serve this wonderful community and make it even better. I do not have a personal agenda, but if I am chosen, I would like to work on the following. We need to protect our water rights. Fisher's Peak needs smart trails not to impact the integrity or beauty. We need to increase our green spaces in town. We need to keep our parks beautiful and every year improve them because they are enjoyed by all ages. We need to bring diverse economy to Trinidad and increase jobs and transportation. Infrastructure, we need to remove the asphalt and paving to decrease the weight on the pipes of the streets and increase the internet speeds and wiring to place it underground. We need strong historic restoration. According to the American Disabilities Act Title III regarding historic, I'm sorry, architectural barriers, if a building is on a National Historic Registry, it cannot be touched or modified. However, if it is not on the National Historic Registry, if any renovation occurs, it must be brought up to code. We need more buildings placed on this National Historic Registry as to not to disturb their integrity and to increase their preservation. We have the most Isaac Rapp buildings of anywhere in the United States and most Victorian buildings and houses per capita. We have more than any other city and we need to expand on this. Rapp was also considered the father of the San Fe style. Our golf clubhouse is a prime example of this. We need to improve on our recreation center and our recreation. It'd be nice to have an indoor walking track, indoor Olympic pool, racquetball courts, basketball, volleyball, ice arena, and if we have it, solar power. It'd be nice to have yearly memberships that could cost about a hundred and fifty dollars per person. We can do it as a community. We need to improve on our utilities. We need to take back control of our electricity, our gas, our water and our sewer and to preserve our water. It all starts and ends with water. That is our focus of our life. Thank you so much for having me tonight and I am looking forward to your questions.
Okay, first question, Ms. Ruble. Why do you want to be on city council?
I stayed that, tried to state that during my opening. I have been, I was born and raised in Trinidad and I loved Trinidad. And I would like to serve the community that has served me and has treated me so well.
Okay, Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ruble, what do you see as the greatest challenge in the state?
Economic diversity. We need to increase different jobs.
Ms. Ruble, what is your understanding of the role of city council?
The role of the city council is to help with the focus of the city and the guidance of the city. It is to to manage and help with each department for congruency together to look for.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Ruble, what is an example of something you think the city has done well or city council specifically? And if the city council has done well over the last eight years, specific in which?
Of last how many years, I'm sorry? Of last how many?
Um, did any of the last few years, five or three work? Examples of something you think that-
I think expanding on the historic preservation has been wonderful. Um, to redo the brick streets, uh, they're iconic to Trinidad and the buildings and to expand on that. And to to fix the with the the buildings like the space to create. I think that's that's wonderful and to expand on that. And to preserve these buildings. We just don't have empty buildings that are deteriorating.
Ms. Ruble, how do you feel about legalized retail marijuana?
Well, I think that's irrelevant because the voters have already asked that question, answered that question.
Okay. Go ahead, Les.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, Ms. Ruble, I think it's a policy that you, do you agree with that in the city of Trinidad with legalized marijuana in the community?
Again, I think that is an irrelevant question because the voters have answered that.
Well, ask a different question.
Okay. Okay, we'll do, thank you. Um, what do you think you would add to or how would you strengthen the council if you were elected in the world tour?
I think I'm a very diverse member and would be. I think I have a very broad perspective of the community and society.
Ms. Ruble, there will be times if you are select, go ahead. Go ahead, Les. I was going to say, uh, Ms. Ruble, there will be times if you are selected that your opinion or viewpoint will be challenged on council. How will you handle it?
Tactfully, I'm with Grace.
Go ahead, Les.
Okay, uh, Mayor, thank you. I was going to say, I think, uh, this was, uh, I'm giving it a talent for Ms. Ruble. Um, is there one overriding issue in policy in the state council, Mayor?
One? Well, the-
Yeah, one, like, main call, is there some issue in your purpose? Go ahead.
I would like to promote things for the the youth of Trinidad and to with and also water. We need to protect our water rights. We need to expand on those. Um, because that is going to take us far into this century after we're all gone. We need to protect those water routes. Uh, the other thing is the children. We need to establish recreation and, um, good city structure for our children, libraries, parks, outdoor space. I'm very strong proponent of recreation. That's why I served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for so long.
Ms. Ruble, I think that concludes your interview and, uh, thank you for participating and good luck.
So much.
All right, thank you.
Um, probably, uh, Christopher's on it. Hope to supply the people there. Um, well, yeah, you probably can, Sarah. Wonder is, is that Eric delivered? Oh, yes.
Good evening. Good evening. Mr., I guess, how you doing, Gerhard?
Gerhard, that's Gerhard.
Thank you. Mr. Gerhard, thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. Background information, on May the nineteenth at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned, resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four vacancies that the city charter, uh, the city Trinidad states, within forty-five days when the vacancy was created, council shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. This is what we are doing tonight. Please note that if you are appointed, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of 2021, you can then put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a four-year term. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So please be as direct and brief so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. City attorney, Mr. Downs, will now give you some information about process. Go ahead, Mr. Downs.
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, good, thank you. Should have a little video. Say, um, Mr. Hardeston, Mayor, was, uh, was saying you were going to a lot of ten minutes. Uh, there will be ten with three minutes on the hearing body. And it's ten minutes, uh, forty testable questions. Um, and then after that, you will are the, uh, the last staff, the one with the last seat. After that council, we have voted and I begin to dip the field down to your candidates that did our field. Do you understand, Mr.?
I do, thank you.
Do you have any other questions or possible more to begin?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, we'll begin by giving you your three-minute introduction and we'll start with questions.
Hello, council. My name is Christopher Gerhard. I, uh, am not a native of Trinidad, but I've been here for about five years. I have been welcomed with open arms to this amazing city of ours here. I believe I saw that there was a council vacancy. I thought now is a better, uh, one of the best times at any to give back to this amazing community that has given so much to me and my family. Uh, currently, I'm a regional general manager for one of the largest dispensary chains in the state of Colorado here in Trinidad. Uh, I have believed that I can bring my many years of education and insight into the retail side of, uh, how, uh, those work to the city council by helping plan for the future and the needs that we have here. Uh, my, I have about twenty years of customer service and retail experience with the last ten years being in high-end management. So I know how how those work. Uh, I believe that I have a great level-headed mind that would work well with the council and coming, uh, coming up with the future plans for our beautiful city here. Uh, I, uh, I apologize that I've been just been a long day. Uh, and I believe that my values kind of coincide with the city and the values of the citizens of Trinidad. And I believe that that my knowledge and my education can help us better this wonderful city of ours.
Okay. So you kind of answered this, but I'll give you an opportunity to expand. Why do you want to be on city council?
I believe that I can help. I believe that, uh, with my open-mindedness and my ability to understand a lot of things in today's world and be very level-headed about it, I think I can offer more, uh, with my service.
Go ahead, Les.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to what you, uh, see the reviews that raise down to these new policies?
I think, actually, that's two things. I think one would be jobs and housing. We need more jobs and we need more housing that's more, uh, you know, beginning levels. So people can come here, they can, you know, uh, get a good footing and get, be part of the American dream with that house. Be part of the American dream with that job.
Mr. Gerhard, what is your understanding of the role of city council?
I understand the role of the city council to be one that governs the city, making laws and, uh, ordinances that help govern, govern that city to, for the better of its citizens. Um, to do those in a most beneficial way for everybody, not just one.
Les, come in.
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Gerhard, I'm sure you've heard of, you said you've provided in the, uh, the city for over twelve months. When the time that you've been here, if you give us an example of stuff that you think the city of Trinidad has done well, especially city marijuana?
I think one of the things, uh, and it happens to hit real close to home, that you guys have done well, is the allocation of marijuana tax revenues and the things that you're doing with that, setting up the city for a brighter future with those steps you have taken from the animal shelter and its needs to the, just recently with the COVID pandemic, where we had, uh, a few people, uh, avail themselves of that marijuana tax revenue. That's one thing that would come to mind. Uh, a few other things would, I would say, would be, uh, our roads that are being updated and, uh, maintained in a better fashion along with our sidewalks.
Kind of on the flip side of that, do you know of anything that you would disagree with that the city council has not done well over the last few years that you've been here?
Off the top of my head, I would not be able to give a definite answer to that because there's nothing that I've noticed from myself or those that I, uh, acquaint myself with that have claimed, uh, that you guys have done wrong. I think you guys do a fairly just service for this community and you've had pretty good target. You've been on target fairly so far.
Okay. Les.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gerhard, you've, you've, uh, it was open, it is like around this issue. But how do you feel about legalized marijuana, legally open the process, particularly inside in this city?
I feel actually, uh, legalized marijuana has, uh, opened up avenues for some folks. It has allowed people to get their lives back, whether you use it for medicinal purposes or it has allowed you to enter a workforce that beforehand, because of some odd reason or another, you were precluded from being a part of other jobs because it, you might have had a conviction for a joint or something in your past. So, uh, I believe the marijuana industry is just, we're just seeing the beginnings of what it can offer for our city, for our county, and for our state. You know, all the jobs, for example, my company, you know, I have ten full-time positions with just my little shop alone. Not to mention our grow facility and the other things that go with it. And all those folks, and they're good-paying jobs, bring that money back into the economy, buy cars, buy houses, for example. I just, I am in the purchasing, uh, in the, uh, stages of purchasing my first home now here in Trinidad because I have such great belief in the future and of this city and the things that we have going for us. I kind of like to phrase it like this, like Ronald Reagan said of Washington DC, the bright and shining city on the, uh, on the hill. I like to see Trinidad as the bright and shining city of the future on the mountainside, you know, because that's where we are. We have an amazing historical town here that could do a lot of things.
Mr. Gerhard, what do you think you would add to or how would you strengthen city council? Say that one time, hold this. What do you think you would add to or how would you, or how would you strengthen city council?
I believe that I would add a very rational, level-headed approach to every, uh, discussion and topic that we have, have with city council. I believe my many years of experience, uh, on the job and personally have given me the tools to, uh, approach any topic or problem that I have and, uh, do it logically and level-headed. Seeing both sides of the fence, because I don't particularly prescribe to one set of, uh, beliefs when it comes to political agendas and things that I, of that nature. I do believe I'm open-minded. I like to listen with my ears and, and then make a response to what is needed.
Go ahead, Les.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Um, you know, sir, if you were, uh, if you were the party's, uh, uh, side of the debate and, um, if there was a disagreement of city council, how would you handle disagreement? How do you handle disagreements in general in your laws, uh, to the council?
The way I handle disagreements is, one, I like to make sure I'm understanding the issue. Making sure, one, that I'm not, uh, uh, falling behind the topic and causing the disagreement. The, the next thing I'd like to do is make sure that I'm being a very good steward and mediating both sides of an issue. If it isn't me, I'm helping a, a lot with, say, for example, my employees. They don't all get along, but we all have one goal and that's to make our employment better. And so I always try to tend to take the middle ground. I always try to be very understanding, level-headed, and listen to the issues that, uh, that I'm trying to solve.
Okay, Dr. Gerhard, I think this is the last question, sir.
That was the last question, okay? Mr. Gerhard, thank you for participating. That ends your, uh, part of the night and, uh, good luck to you. And, uh, now we'll move forward with, uh, voting and we'll see how that turns out. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service, council. Everyone, please.
Okay, for councils, uh, we've listened to nine people tonight. What I would like to do now is state, would you guys rather have five minutes or ten minutes to gather all of your thoughts? Ten minutes, somebody says ten minutes? So let's give everybody ten minutes and, uh, to gather all your thoughts before we start the voting process.
Uh, Les, Les, have time? Yeah, thank you. Charles Williams, I'd like to, uh, Mayor, I would like to say, um, to, to all of council that Mr. Hickson, by not appearing tonight, I think he has effectively removed himself. Is that, it would be fair if the other, not, I'm not being that, or not trying to be disparaging in any way, but it would be fair to allow the remaining of the mix, but he didn't appear. I would say this might be different if he had all the sense that he could be here. Then maybe we can make arrangements, but it's my, it's, he did not show. So I, I, I just would emphasize if I'm not being here and doing whatever else can he, he has worked himself to that.
So let me ask you this, Les, because of that particular issue, should we take a vote of accepting nine applicants and omitting, uh, Mr. Hickson from the, from the list? Or do you think we need to go through that process?
Mayor, I don't think you need to. I think you have nine applicants, you know, and you will, um, vote up from the nine.
Okay. Okay, council, uh, go ahead and, go ahead, you have, Ms. Ogletree, you have question?
I just wanted to confirm that we're still voting for four, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, is how we're at in energy, how does he write more than five? So he has four, are people that, you have, have spoken for four, four people. And then next round, please vote for a few.
So let's go ahead and take about ten minutes to gather thoughts, uh, your first round, and then we'll move forward with that. So, uh, we'll get here, we'll get back in about ten minutes. So put your, put your thoughts together and we'll have the voting process.